Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenick. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Keon. Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Benner. Alderman Engelbert has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments in any manner of concern to the city. I don't see anyone from the public here this evening, so we'll move on to Item F, Report of Department Head Staff Consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive and put on file minutes A through I and J through R.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Steika, could you speak to Item L under Communications? Thank you.
Sure. It's been talked about for a number of years, trying to get a drug drop box so people that have unwanted prescription medications would have a way to get rid of them. We've looked into it in the past, but there was some confusion and some uncertainty on the part of the federal government as far as what to do with the medication once you have that. The federal government has since come, and they've said that they're no longer going to be collecting them, but the state of Wisconsin has stepped up and said that they will take over the program. As a result, I started working with our community liaison officer, Aaron Zemlock, who applied for a grant from CVS Pharmacy to get us a no-cost drug drop box, and we did receive that drug drop box, and our plan is to have that up and running by May 1st. So our community will be along the same lines as other communities, so residents will have the local option of getting rid of unwanted medication.
Very welcome. Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably for either Mark or Greg, the sub-pump monitoring. We're just taking certain areas, correct? We've already done a number of areas, because I know my place was done.
That's correct. We're just in the next phase of the city, mostly north of the river, west of DePere, up to Fourth Street in that area. And this is the second-phase letter, or second-stage letter going out to those property owners that did not respond to the first letter.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Chief, back at Item L, where's the location going to be for the public? And when will it be open?
May 1st is our target date. We need to make sure that we have some procedures in place on how we will deal with the medication we bring in, and it will be at the police department, somewhere in the lobby area, so people can just walk right in.
Good. There, they think they have any other locations, but they're too insecure.
The drug drop boxes are actually pretty specific as far as where they go, so it would only be at the police department. It has to be monitored 24/7 with someone sitting there watching it. Pharmacies do have the capability of taking in medication themselves, but there's been no pharmacies that I'm aware of in the state of Wisconsin that will take the medications back. They changed the law with that, so this would be the spot for them.
Will Walgreens and CVS be advertising it, or at their locations?
I'm not sure what advertisement they do. I know CVS does play an active role in it. Obviously, after giving us the box, they lick it on both sides of it. As far as Walgreens, I'm unaware of any sort of advertising they would do.
Maybe you could contact them, maybe they put up a flyer or something.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The consent agenda this evening has seven items. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of March 16th and from the Joint Common Council with the City of Nina on, did I say April? Okay, March 17th then. The Board of Public Works' recommendations from March 16th, the change order for J.F. Ahern Company for the water treatment facility low-level pump modifications, the deduct of The recommendation to award contract unit 2015-01, new street construction and reconstruction. Southfield West Nature's Way subdivision, Barker Farm subdivision, River Leah Court, Broad Street, Ida Street, Manitowoc Street, and Lincoln Street to northeast asphalt for $1,084...I'll get it eventually. The Personnel Committee recommendation of March 16th for the creation of the Administrative Services Department and the Human Resources Coordinator position. And the Plan Commission recommendation from March 17th for the certified survey map for River Leah Court and the certified survey map for River Leah Court for Lot CSM. With variations and exceptions for the minimum right-of-way radius of 60 feet and a minimum inside curb radius of 40 feet, be waived per Section 14118 of the Manisha Code of Ordinances. And the Nina-Manisha Fire Rescue Joint Fire Commission recommendation from April 1st for the regional fire department hiring process agreement with Fox Valley Technical College. Are there any items that anyone would like separated this evening? We did want the one...Item...
Five.
Five, if we could have someone separate that and clarify the salary range that goes with it as well. Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to separate Item 5 for clarification.
And are there other items that anyone else would like? Otherwise, if you'd like to make the motion as well.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7.
There's a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote on those items?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Is there a motion for Item 5? We were just looking to have the salary read as part of the motion to create the salary scale. Alderman Benner?
Make the motion, but I don't have a salary in front of me right now.
It's in here someplace. I was looking for the memo here, wherever the memo went. We did put the memo back in.
I have it. Thank you. This time, I'd like to make a motion for Item 5, the creation of the Administrative Services Department/Human Resources Coordinator position. And with a proposed salary beginning at $55,550 for the HR coordinator, with a midpoint of $61,711, and a maximum after 25 years of $60,782.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. The Springstead study, I haven't received it, but I've received some phone calls on this, and I certainly would like to see the Springstead study. And according to that, I was told that the Manisha Utilities was supposed to be involved with this, that Administrative Service Director was supposed to pick up some of those responsibilities with the utility. And I like that idea that we start combining different agencies in the city here to reduce costs. And I would like to see this tabled for the new council, and I would like the Springstead study handed out to the new council so they can see exactly what was put together with these tax dollars for this study. A shared service is a great idea, and I would like to make a motion to table this for the new council.
There's a motion, a second. We can discuss being tabled. Okay, is there discussion? Alderman Taylor, do you have discussion?
I have some.
Sure.
Thank you. I was at the utility meeting, and we were going to discuss it, but there was a lack of acquorum at that point, so we didn't...there was really no discussion on this because there was a lack of acquorum, so I think that's the reason I seconded it, just because of that, and then we could discuss it with the utility to go on further.
Alderman Sevenick?
We are only looking to change the Administrative Service Director's position from coordinator, right?
Yes.
Okay. But I understand what Alderman Zalinski and Taylor are saying, is that, you know, if I had not received this table of contents of, you know, I may just have just voted, but I agree that, and I know that most of us up here know the Springstead study and that the utility was supposed to play a role in this, and we would have to change this again if the utility did get involved with...and excuse me, I have to go backwards. We are changing the Human Resource Coordinator's position from specialist to coordinator. That's what we're doing this evening, not the Administrative Service Director. Okay, now I got that straightened out. So this draft of March 16th, to me, would need to be changed if we did have the utilities part of this. Is there plans on your part, or are the utilities up doing that?
We did speak to the...
Because I did bring it up last time, remember?
We did speak with the utilities, and there are certain things that we would like to start out with, with the utilities, including discipline, benefits...what was the other ones, Pam? There were a couple of things we were planning on working with utilities for originally. What we plan on doing is contracting for services at the utility level to the city, so providing a set sum of dollars each year and a set number of hours each year that we would provide services back to the utility. The utility is a little further ahead of us on our policy handbook, our employee handbook, so that's one of the first things that needs to be done at the city level. So in the beginning, this person would work much more closely with the city than with the utility, and over time, it would go together. But yes, we did plan on, right from the beginning, doing certain things together.
So for a point of clarification, are we voting today on this at all with that motion? Because I don't think we were, but we are voting to change the position of the Human Resource Specialist to the Human Resource Coordinator with a different salary and makeup.
And different responsibilities as well.
That's what I mean by makeup.
With the retirement of our current person as of June 1st.
Was there a reason why we're trying to get this done right now instead of, like, maybe waiting to table so that we can get it done correctly? Is it because we want to get someone hired?
I'm not sure what correctly would mean.
Well, I mean, I don't think that this table of contents is right if we're going to put the utilities into the mix. So if we are going to put the utilities into the mix, this is...this would have to change. But with Alderman Benner's motion, it sounds to me as though, right now, today, we're only looking at changing the position of the specialist to a coordinator and changing the responsibilities and salary.
The table of organization wouldn't change either. The utility would be able to contract for services. The utility already contracts for services through the attorney's office, too.
Okay.
So it'd be a similar situation where they pay a set dollar amount to get a set amount of services each month. So no, the table of organization will not change. But we do need to have someone in that position.
And that's, I guess, that was part of my question. Are we doing this today so that we can get things moving, so that you can hire a new person? Isn't this person leaving at the end of...
June 1st.
Or the end of the month?
Yes. So we...and we would also involve utilities in hiring this new person.
Okay.
They would be part of the interview panel.
All right.
Do you have other questions, Stan?
No, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? So right now, the motion that's on the table is to table this. Two tables in a row. Oh, sorry, Kevin.
I'm sorry. I just have concerns with actually tabling this at this time, because the matrix really doesn't change, and we have to start recruiting for this position. This is not a position that you're going to put an adult, you're going to have to start doing interviews in two weeks. So I kind of struggle with it from the perspective that we decided through the Springstead study and through the past two years of working on this that this was the direction we wanted to go. We decided to go there, and now we're going to delay the hiring process, and I think that it's going to leave us in a lull for a while of possibly not having somebody in this position once Mike retires. So I'm kind of interested what management's thoughts are on that at this point, as far as the ability to recruit, interview, and make a hire and put somebody in place by June 1st. It's not a lot of time.
The expectation was that the new person would start somewhere in the vicinity of June 1st if we started recruiting pretty much immediately. You don't have any inside information on this, Jennifer, do you? I don't think you...
That's what I understand.
Okay. I didn't think you were heavily involved, but I didn't know. So no, that was the goal, is to have the person in place by as close to June 1st as possible. We have put a lot more duties and responsibilities from the Finance Director into the Administrative Services Department. So if you try to now take away the position that we have and put all those responsibilities into the Administrative Services Department head and some of it into the attorney's office, it's not going to create a good situation. I mean, we can wait for two more weeks if you want to, but we wouldn't want to wait until the new council. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Everything with Kevin, I mean, we were looking at this, Alderman Benner, we were looking at this for over two years ago already, and the same thing. I'm wondering, you know, all of a sudden, why are we waiting till the last minute? And I guess I'm wondering, I mean, it wouldn't change anything. This is where we wanted to go anyway for the last two years. So I don't know. I mean, I respect Alderman Taylor's motion, but I mean, to say, "Well, let's wait for the new council," we've been actually trying, wanted to get this for the last two years. So we're two councils different from then to this today. So I'm just wondering, you know, where the utilities is on this. I mean, are they all on board, and are they...I mean, because we wanted to be, we wanted to be together on this, correct?
Like I said, we're in a little bit different spot in our HR development right now. Our handbook isn't as far along as theirs is. Our performance review system isn't as far as long as theirs is, so we need to catch up on those two items. But there's other things, benefits and discipline and professional development, hiring. There's those things that we can work together right from the start. So it will grow over time, the relationship. In the beginning, it will be more heavily weighted on the city side than the utility side, is the goal.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
That's true, that we can't wait two weeks. And by the way, wait for the last minute on this if it's been in the making for two years, you know? I've never seen the Springstead study. The utilities doesn't seem to be, even had a meeting on this at this point, as Alderman Zalinski said, who was a commissioner on that commission. So to say, "We're up against the wall, and we got to do something now," I mean, I don't care for that whatsoever, and I think there's no reason we can't look at this with the utilities, get our ducks in the row here before an administrator comes in, and wait a couple of weeks, and also let the new council be informed on this. They're going to have to deal with it, you're going to have to work with it. Who knows what that council's going to be in two weeks? So it's an opportunity here, I think, to get our ducks in a row from the administration, from the utilities and the city, and also with the people that are electing officials. Get the Springstead study to the new people and let them look at it, too, and then let's move forward to it in a manner that everybody's on the same page. I'm just asking to hold it, table it for two weeks here.
If this gets, if it's tabled, it would either have to be pulled off the table at the next meeting, or it would die. But I guess, what information are you looking for, Alderman Taylor? We would want to have that information if there's something that you feel we don't have yet. This has been budgeted in the utilities' budget for the past two budgets, so it's not like something the Utility Commission hasn't known. It's been in this year's budget as well as the previous year's budget.
Why don't we use the last minute, I want a council, I want to have a little break in the middle of the time?
Can you turn your mic on, too? Oh, Pam's got hers on. Oops, sorry. Yours still isn't going on here. There we go.
Now, why do we wait till the last minute's been, in there two weeks, two years? And then when it comes to this body, always, it's always, "You got to do it now, you got to do it now," and put us up against the wall and give us no time to adjust to this.
This was on the last Personnel Committee.
I know, it was.
And it was passed.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure...if you need more information, let's get the information, I guess, is what I'm asking.
And I think the new council should get the Springstead study so they understand the structure, the structure of this, too. And we're only two weeks away from that.
Well, then, we'd have to go back through Personnel Committee and Council again at that point as well. So we'd be spending another, basically, two months doing this. If there's more, if there's additional information, we'd be happy to get that for you, if it's something that's going to change. Alderman Zalinski?
Is there any wiggle room with the current employee that's in there? Because he was...
He's planning on retiring.
Is there a drop dead date on that, or is he available for another two, three weeks?
I believe he wants to retire at that point because of some other family issues that are...his kids are getting out of school.
What was the lag between when we hired the current one and when the other one retired? There must have been some lag time in between there, because we didn't have that position filled.
There was. I'm not sure what it was, though, to tell you the truth.
Now, all of a sudden, it's a hot issue that we got to get this done now. I agree that we should be maybe advertising it, but...
Well, we can't advertise it until we approve it.
Then we'd be two weeks out to advertise it.
I guess my question is, what are the questions?
Well, I would like some input from the Utility Commission, because we were supposed to discuss it, but we couldn't, and there's no special meeting planned for them, so it's no urgency for them. I don't even know if they're on board with this.
Okay. If the Utility Commission says no, are we not going to have a position then?
Well, then, why'd we even have the Springstead study? Because that would be the biggest leap that we'd have in between the two that we were supposed to do, and that's what we were talking about two years ago, sharing personnel.
But the city does need a position.
Yes, I agree.
I think it's great to have...
And who would be taking care of these duties in the meantime?
It'd be the Administrative Services Director. So did you have something you had to add?
Well, I was just going to mention that the Springstead study is online. It has been online since it was, well, actually, it's been online...the draft, the draft study was online, and then when the final was approved, it was online, and it is still out there. And the reason that it comes to you today is because there will be a vacancy. The same thing happened when Tom gave his notice to retire, the Finance Director. It was at that point that the Common Council was asked to make a decision with regard to what position are we going to be recruiting for? Is it going to be a Finance Director? Is it going to be Administrative Services Director? And so that was the step that the council took, was to move in that direction. The Administrative Services Department actually has not been created yet. That's what this does, is create that department and then moves in the, with the next step in creating that position.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you want to go before me? Okay. I thought you wanted to respond with what she said. Okay. I'm looking at it this way. I absolutely agree with Alderman Taylor and Zalinski about the timing issues and that. But then, on the other side of the coin, you have to look at, we need to fill this new Human Resource Coordinator's position in order for city government to function up here, and the sooner the better. And I don't want to have to tack that on to Peggy, additional work that she doesn't have to be doing, you know, just to make up for, because we're not doing things quick enough up here. So, and I'm not just saying the council, I'm saying everybody. We're kind of all in this, from the mayor to the staff, to ourselves. You know, this is kind of, like you said, an individual's leaving real soon, and we need to try to get this position filled, and that person needs to fit in real well, too. That takes time. So I'm going to vote in favor of the new change, and with the hopes that staff and this council and everyone else takes this as a priority and that, because if we don't, we're going to be lagging behind even further, and I certainly would feel very uncomfortable here in the third floor if we didn't have that position filled.
Well, I had my Springstead study. I wasn't aware of it was online, and I'll call for the vote.
Any other discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please? To table, yes.
What are we doing here?
Oh, this is the vote to table. So if you vote yes, you're going to table it and hold it for a while. If you vote no, then the question will be on the floor to approve the position. There's some mic.
I'm going to reset it again, so if you would just hold it in, please, because sometimes there's a shortener, but it now worked.
Motion carried on, roll call 2-5.
So now the motion is on the table to approve the position? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to hold this for two weeks. Doesn't seem like the city's got their ducks in order on this, and the utilities haven't even met on this.
The motion, a second, is held. Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for March 19th to April 2nd. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 3/1915 to 4/215 in the amount of $4,842,742.2.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenick?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. On page, large page, combine page 24, check number 49519. It's for River Park brochure, and then it says website. So is it both, or is it a combination? Is it the brochure for the park out there?
Yes.
And then it put on a website?
He designed, no, it's a separate website. So there's a separate website as well as a brochure for that fundraising effort.
Okay. So that was for the design of the brochure and the brochures?
And the website.
Oh, that's what I asked you, and you said no. Okay, thank you.
There's a separate website from the city website, is what I was saying. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing, Alderman Taylor?
Page 4, combine page 4, check number 49396.
For Zalinski? Alderman Taylor?
Pardon me?
Zalinski?
Yes.
Okay. I can answer that one.
It's for $637.50 professional services.
That would have been acting as pro tem...
For the municipal...
Pro tem city attorney. So sitting in for the city attorney as the prosecutor in municipal court.
In the municipal court. Thank you.
Any other items? Seeing done, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-0.
Item 2 is beverage operators license applications for the 2013 through 15 licensing year. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the two thousand thirteen through two thousand fifteen licensing period as listed on the police department's memo dated April first, two thousand fifteen.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item three is an amendment to the fee schedule for beverage operators' licenses. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the amendment to the fee schedule for the beverage operators' license.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item M is claims against the city. I'll have the city attorney explain this first, and then we'll ask for a motion.
On January thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, the city received a notice of just compensation and property tax liability document. That's how the document was titled. It was a claim submitted by Brendan Ribble on behalf of the Ralph R. Ribble and Ruth L. Ribble Revocable Living Trust. That's a lot of Rs. And a copy of that was already provided to the Common Council. And what this is, is a formal notice of disallowance of claim. If this is approved, then this notice will go out, and it puts the Ribble Trust on notice that they have six months from the date of service within which to file a lawsuit, if they plan on a lawsuit. Otherwise, this kind of just hangs out there. So what it does is put a timeframe on it, a short timeframe on it.
Is there a motion at this time? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the notice of disallowance of claim of Brendan Ribble, successor trustee, on behalf of Ralph R. Ribble and Ruth L. Ribble, Revocable Living Trust, dated one thirty fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Savick?
Yes, my question is for the city attorney. You had mentioned that it was a document that we had already received, or are you saying it's a document we now received in our packets?
No, it was...
And if it was received, what, in what fashion was it received? Through email, or through mail, or through one of our other packets?
You're asking if the councils received the document? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, she said that the one that we've already received, or something like that, that we've all received. Are you talking about the one we have now in front of us, or did we receive it in the past?
Yes. The claim, a copy of the claim was distributed to the Common Council. Well, that would have been shortly after January thirtieth, so I'm thinking it would have been in February.
Okay.
It, that would have been the claim that was actually received. You may recall as well that there was a different claim that Mr. Ribble filed back, I believe it was in August of two thousand fourteen. So he had filed two of them. This notice of disallowance of claim is for the second one. He did identify on their, his claim, and then he identified what he was looking for in compensation. And so therefore, those would be the two components then that we, would enable us to ask you, I guess, to disallow the claim so that we can move forward with the formal notice, and that's what I'm asking today.
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to recess to the Board of Public Works.